Everyone ready? Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commissioner meeting for April 25th, 2024 is now in session. I've asked one of our guests today, Farah Wall from Sourcepoint, to come and lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, President of the Board this year. And to my right is Vice President, Vice Chair Barb Lewis, and of course, our Administrator Tracy Davies, and Deputy Administrators Don Houston and Eric Hostel are with us, as well as our clerks. And Brandy, would you... Let's begin.
Item number one, Resolution Number 24-334, in the matter of approving the electronic record as of proceedings from regular meeting held April 22nd, 2024.
So move.
Second. Call for those.
Vote on motion 24-334, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
And Mr. Benton is absent today. We do not have any public comments. That moves us to item number three, Resolution Number 24-335, in the matter of approving purchase orders, then annul certificates and payment of warrants in batch number CM APR 0424, and memo transfers in batch numbers MT APR 0424.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-335, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Item number four, Resolution Number 24-336, in the matter of a new liquor license from WY Mongolian Grill, Inc., and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no request for a hearing.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-336, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Item number five, Resolution Number 24-337, in the matter of setting date and time for viewing and public hearings for consideration of the drainage improvement petition for the Felkner Number 302 watershed filed by Calvin Finks.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-337, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Item number six, Resolution Number 24-338, in the matter of reappointing Chris Boserman, Delaware County Engineer, to the Ohio Public Works Commission's District 17 Integrating Committee, and appointing Tracy Davis, County Administrator, as alternate.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-338, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Item number seven, Resolution Number 24-339, in the matter of appointing Tracy Davies as Interim Director of Economic Development.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-339, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Item number eight, Resolution Number 24-340, in the matter of appointing representatives to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
So move.
Second, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 24-340, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Item number nine, Resolution Number 24-341, in the matter of proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Delaware County.
So move.
Second, discussion. Farah, are you planning on speaking?
Yes.
Come on up. Introduce yourselves to the record.
Good morning. I am Farah Wall. I'm the CEO at Sourcepoint, and I'm very grateful to be here today. And I also am grateful to be able to provide you with an update. It's been a little while since I've presented. And I thought since the last time I think I presented was to make a request that you put our levy on the ballot. That was the primary purpose, that this was a good opportunity for me to come and give you an update on where things have been, how we ended up our last year, 2023, of the previous levy, and what we're looking at this year. So, thank you for having me. Let's see. Oh, it's not...
Are we gonna do the proclamation first?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's do the proclamation first, and we'll get that taken care of, and then we'll... Reasonable?
Yep.
So, do you want to speak to that? Anything you want to say specific about the proclamation?
Just, I appreciate that this is Older Americans Month. It's... May is recognized as Older Americans Month, and the contributions that older Americans make to our communities across the country. So, I think it's a great opportunity to highlight the advantages and benefits of having an older population here in Delaware County and all the contributions that they make.
Mrs. Lewis, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I mean, that's... Pardon me, very obvious as you go around Delaware County. I mean, although some of these older Americans don't look like older Americans, but you see them everywhere, volunteering, and that's such a spirit of helping others. So, I am very grateful for that volunteer work and all the other contributions that they make.
You kind of leaned my way when you said that they don't always look that... I thought you were saying I look younger than my age. Is that what you said?
Oh, certainly.
Well, that was my interpretation. Yeah, obviously, the older American community, 55-plus, I guess is kind of how it's looked at today, play an important role, past and present and future. Obviously, we owe a lot to them, a lot of veterans that have served, and certainly fits in that category, Vietnam War, previous wars, and wars since. They play a very active role in Sourcepoint. I'm always amazed... I don't get by there very much, unfortunately, but parking lots always full during the day. Obviously, a lot of people participating in the many things they're going on out there and helping to serve the older community, but also what they're giving back to the community is equally important. A lot of them serve on our boards, a lot of them do a lot of great things for... I am going to read the resolution, and then we will vote on that, and then give you an opportunity to give us your update.
Great, thank you.
Whereas, May is Older American Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Delaware County's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas, through their wealth of life, experience, and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, Delaware County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to opportunity and connectedness. And therefore, be resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month, and we recognize that this year's theme, Powered by Connections, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. We therefore call upon all residents to join in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. Signed by Commissioner Jeff Benton, Commissioner Barb Lewis, and Commissioner Gary Merrill. You brought some guests with you. Anybody want to speak on this topic, by chance?
Do you'd like to speak this morning? No.
I take that as a... No. With that, we're going to vote on the rest of the proclamation, and then we'll get a photo, and then we'll allow you to talk on the other end.
Okay, great.
Let's vote.
Vote on motion 24-341, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye. They should join us.
Yes.
Steph, please. Oh, I was gonna take... I want this for posterity.
Farah, we look forward to your update.
All right. Well, thank you again for allowing me this opportunity. And I do want to add, we had the opportunity to recognize volunteers just a little over a week ago, and we had 300 of our volunteers in attendance at our dinner. And it just always amazes me, their dedication and the number of hours that they contribute. And we couldn't do what we do without them. So, that's so very true. And we also have noticed since the pandemic, and this is part of what I'll talk about here in a moment, but since the pandemic, I think that we've all recognized the importance of social connections and connecting with others, and how important that is, and particularly how it combats loneliness. And because of that, we have exceeded and surpassed all previous years in terms of attendance, of participation, and even in the number of clients that we're serving as well. But it's just, I think that seeing the cars in the parking lot, like you mentioned, is just evidence of the fact that people really do want to connect with other people, do things that are engaging for them and fun, including volunteering, but also including participating in the activities that we offer. So, thank you. All right. So, I wanted first to... I think I'm going to talk about a few key performance indicators, some things that we're measuring to demonstrate our effectiveness. And I will just highlight a few of these. We served 2,100 individuals in 2023 in our in-home care program, which is a big increase from the previous year. We provided 298,000-plus meals in 2023, which was also an increase compared to the previous years. Seventy-five percent of our home care clients reported that they did not have an emergency room visit or an unplanned medical visit. That's one of the ways that we can demonstrate how our services are benefiting those that we're serving as well as benefiting the community, because it lowers the cost of healthcare. Ninety percent of our referrals to contracted providers were filled. This was a big goal for us in 2023, because during, especially immediately following... In 2022 was our toughest year. We had a very high, for the very first time, unfilled referral rate. And that means when we make a referral to a home care provider, that they are not able to accept it, and it was primarily because of the shortage of home care workers. So, that is a big improvement compared to the previous year. And in past years, we've only had about a 2% unfilled referral rate. And in 2022, I believe it was about 68% unfilled. So, maybe even a little more than that. Eighty-five percent of our disenrolled clients agreed that the services helped them to stay at home, which is where they want to be, and they're able to continue to contribute to their community in that way. In our community programs, which is our... Those activities and programs that occur both onsite as well as offsite, we engaged 3,253 individuals at our enrichment center. We provided insurance counseling to over 1,000 individuals, saving them in Medicare costs almost to the tune of a half a million dollars. Ninety-two percent of our members reported having 21 or more healthy days per month. And so, that is another goal and key indicator that what we're providing to the older adults is helping them to be healthier. So, we're quite proud of that as well. So, as you can see, while our levy income was a little bit less than we anticipated, our total 2023 income was higher than budgeted. And this is really because of the hard work that in our pursuit of other funding, such as grants, corporate, private donations, as well as fees that were collected. This made up the difference in the loss in the levy funding than what we had budgeted. But in spite of having fulfilled our promise to raise $10 million during the last levy cycle, that was done one year ahead of schedule. We did that in 2022. So, we were... Oops, sorry. Hit the wrong button. We were able to... Whatever we added last year, which was significantly more than budgeted, was above that amount. So... I want to just... Sorry. So, that was an additional amount in 2023 that we had not anticipated for that levy cycle. Now, I want to provide, one of the things that we do before I... Before we come to you and ask for your support to put the senior services levy on the ballot every five years, we do a strategic planning process. And that's so that we can identify what the needs are presently and what they're going to be projected into the future, so that we... That our request of you and of the voters is adequate to meet the needs of the growing population. So, our first... This is basically the timeline for developing our current strategic plan that we're operating under. We developed that, and we worked on that through August of 2021 through June of 2022. It was approved by our Board of Directors in July of 2022. The resolution to be put on the ballot, as you may recall, was in August of 2022, so that we could proceed with fulfilling our strategic goals. Last year, Sourcepoint worked on 166 action items from our strategic plan. And as you can see from this graph, we completed 66% of those action items. And that covered like... Well, I won't go into the specifics of the 36 tactics, but it was a very robust plan. And we are... Some of what was not done, as you can see in the gray, 8% of the projects were canceled, and then the 14% were delayed. And what that references is that we had to be fluid. You know, you create a plan as you anticipate, and we all know what they say about creating a plan. And you're going to be up for some surprises. So, we were able to shift directions and meet some of the unexpected needs. But that did have an impact, because we only have a certain number of staff and volunteers and time available. So, it might have changed some of those goals. So, these are some of the highlights of what we focused on and achieved. In 2023, we increased personal and corporate donations by 5%. We completed the analysis of the nutrition administrative workload to assure necessary staffing. We increased the number of recorded volunteer hours, and we reduced, as I mentioned before, in-home care unfilled referral rates by 70.3%. Under the area of reach, access, and engagement, we increased program offerings off-site at off-site locations. And that's important, because we know that not everyone has the ability to come to Sourcepoint. We're centrally located where we are today. However, we recognize that with transportation challenges and other barriers, we want to break down any barriers there are to access to our programs and services. So, we go out into the community. We conduct needs assessments in each of the community. We work with focus groups, find out what they're interested in having in their community, and then we take those to the community. We're in Sunbury. We're in Sunbury, the... I always forget the city hall, right? The city hall building. And we are also in Genoa Township. We're at the... And we operate usually out of the Genoa Township Hall. We provide programs and services. Much of those programs have been focused on caregivers and insurance. We also did some fraud education there. And we also are beginning to do some programming in PAO. So, we're trying to meet folks where they are to make it easier for them to access the programming that we offer. We expanded the use of multilanguage welcome information. We updated our speakers bureau and ran an awareness campaign. And because we no longer... We don't want to be the best kept secret in Delaware County. We want folks to know about us, so that they can access those important services that they need. And then, we've enhanced collaboration with community partners to increase access to support services. So, that is something that we have always taken our responsibility in working with other organizations to maximize what they do, because we know that we can't do it alone. All right. In the area of scope and change, we expanded staff trained in Health in Action, which is an evidence-based program. And then, we restructured the main entrance with the new greeters desk, because we were finding that people just weren't quite sure where to go when they walked in the door. Because, as you know, when you walk in our door, there's a door on this side, and there's a door on this side. So, we... That has been a great assistance. That has provided great assistance to our membership. We restructure... Or, excuse me. We continued to work to improve agency-wide disaster preparedness plans. And we're continuing to work on that still yet this year, but we're getting things down in writing, so that we can respond to disasters in a timely fashion. We offered an intergenerational trip to see Frozen the Musical, and that was very well received by membership and the children. So, that is also just a glimpse of the programming changes that we made to meet the requests of our members. So, in the area of awareness and image, we hosted the Second Annual Retirement Ready Drive-Thru. We educated in-home care partners on the breadth of Sourcepoint offerings. It's always amazing to me that our partners that we work with consistently, how sometimes they don't know everything that we do. It does take a while to get familiar with all the different aspects of Sourcepoint. So, they can be great ambassadors for us, and they can help engage their client... Our mutual clients that they serve and provide good, accurate information. So, we will continue with those efforts. We updated and printed our services directory, which is always a very popular item among the community members. And then, we published regular posts on availability of program scholarships. So, those who are unable to afford some of the programs or activities that have a cost to them, there are scholarships available that are funded through donations and private dollars. Quality. We've always taken quality very seriously at Sourcepoint, and we want to provide the best quality services to those... To our clients and our visitors and the community. So, we developed key performance indicators for our community programs. You'll remember that I mentioned the 21 healthy days. That's one of those. We implemented a recognition program for our in-home care partners, therefore highlighting the work of the partners that meet our qualifications and demonstrate high-quality service. And then, train staff in question persuade and refer a program that has been found to be helpful with older adults and something that we have implemented. Some of the additional projects, we developed a new process for providing home-delivered meals. This was one of the... And this was based on funding availability and our capacity. You know, our building, we are... We started, when we first started providing meals, we were serving 30,000 meals a year. And you saw earlier, we're closer to 300,000 meals per year. So, we've seen a significant growth in that program. And, you know, there's only so much space in our kitchen. So, we knew that we needed to... Sustainability is important. And so, we knew we needed to take a look at what we were doing and find ways to manage our capacity and continue to be able to sustain ourselves throughout the decades ahead. So, that was a big project that actually took precedence over some of the things that we originally had on our strategic plan. We also hired a new Chief Financial Officer. We had a retirement of our Chief Financial Officer, Kim Clewell, who used to be with us. And she retired, moved to Florida. And we hired Tim Patton, who is a CPA. And he hit the ground running and has been doing... He just celebrated his one-year anniversary. So, we're happy to have him. And then, partnered with the county commissioners to create a plan to utilize the Healthy Aging State Grants for maximum impact. And we are certainly grateful for that support. And we want to let you know that... How the process for that has gone. I am going to... Before I take a look at 2024, I'm going to jump into the Healthy Aging Grants, and then I'll go back and look at 2024. So, the Healthy Aging Grants... Let me go back for just a moment. Thanks to the 295,000 federal ARPA funding distributed by the High Department Aging and provided to Sourcepoint by the county commissioners, we've been able to expand our reach and service to our residents, and these are specific to individuals 60 and over. So, everybody describes older adults differently, but these services are specific to 60 and above. So, food insecurity. About $18,700 are remaining to be spent. But as you can see from this graph, the purple represents what's already been spent of those grant dollars. And these reports have been... I believe they were submitted last month, indicating where this money goes. But I wanted to show it in this visual format. So, most... A lot of the money has already been spent to achieve the goals that we proposed to the commissioner. We have spent... This money has been spent by some of our partner organizations, such as People in Need and Lutheran Social Services for their pantry costs. So, that's what that funding has been used for. These are on track to be spent before the end of the grant period, which is September of this year. And Penn will most likely use up their funding by the end of June with Lutheran Social Services, probably accessing all of their funds by the end of May, almost this month. Oh, I thought I saw Tracy's hand. Sorry. Internet access and digital literacy, 3,000, is set aside for Sourcepoint to create a cybersecurity video, which we are in the process of doing. And Delaware County District Library has not spent, however, any of their funding as of yet. They do have the staff and program in place now to purchase the tablets. And staff will preload eBooks for patrons. So, that is in the works. Sunbury Community Library is on track to spend their funding by the end of the grant period. So, that's kind of where that stands. Warrenstaff Memorial Library in Ashley is using their funding for mobile hotspot services. So, we're looking at digital literacy and access is very important for those, again, who can't access the building or the facilities. who can't access the building or the facilities. They have a small lending library there, and it's smaller than others. So, they have not used a great deal of their funding, their award yet. And then housing assistance. Penn is using these funds for their eviction prevention program, utility and utility assistance, et cetera. And they will most likely use those funds by April, by the end of this month or early next month. And then Family Promise is using the housing funds for nights of stay in their shelter. And they're on track to spend sometime, those funds sometime this summer. And then we have Bridges Community Action is using their funds for home repair and modifications, which are important in order to be able, for folks to be able to stay in their home as their mobility and needs might change over time, and as well as their homes might be aging, you know, aging in place as well. Their funding is a little bit harder to predict because of the types of projects that they do, but we anticipate that they will also be spending those funds as well. And then this demonstrates the total number of individuals served, as you can see, is 1,715 individuals with the funds that have been spent so far. And the reason that you see zero under wellness is, that is, we have purchased all of the items and received them to create companion kits for our wellness program participants. And we are working, it's weights that they can take home with them and use virtually, and some other bands, some exercise bands and things of that nature, so that they can do those exercises at home. And we have, we anticipate rolling out this program this summer to 200 individuals. So, we just have to put the materials together to distribute them to folks. So, that's why there have been, that's why that number comes up as zero. So, let me just, we really want to thank you for your faith in SourcePoint's ability to use these funds in targeted ways to serve our community. And because I think SourcePoint has demonstrated our commitment to planning, we were able to, you know, put these funds to use in ways that helped improve the lives of Delaware County older adults quickly. We were able to act quickly to be able to move those, to assist those folks. So, let me go back now to just briefly highlight, so what's planned for 2024. So, we have explore virtual visits for our in-home care clients, and that's also part of where those wellness kits are going to go. Make the Southern Meals on Wheels Delivery Hub operational. We have a partnership with Olentangie Schools, the administrate. We have, we have a shed that is built where we can store items, and we're going to have our van to take meals to that location so that they can get meals out to the southern part of the county faster, so the meals stay hotter. And it helps, you know, helps reduce traffic. It helps reduce the number of miles that they're driving. So, that's what we're doing there. It helps get to the folks. Streamlined efficiencies in our SourcePoint transportation services. Explored new technologies across the agency to continue to improve efficiencies. Transitioned to a new accounting software. That's something that's already in the works. We have purchased the software. We're just working on the logistics and, as you probably know, that takes time. And then expand the use of interpreter services, translation apps, and the welcome multi-language information. One of the things that's not mentioned here, there's actually two that aren't mentioned here, but they are, they are things that we're looking at in 2024. We had, we just recently had a space study completed, and so we're going to be looking at the results of the space study and making some determinations about what we might be able to do differently within our existing footprint currently, and then planning forward with potential expansion needs, again, in order to meet capacity. And another thing that we're looking at very, very closely is housing and the lack of affordable and accessible housing for seniors. And this is becoming an increasing issue that both as an organization and our board are beginning to look at and finding way, looking how SourcePoint might be able to impact that issue. As you know, because I've seen both of you at the Housing Alliance meetings, we are part of that, we're part of the older adults subcommittee of that, and kind of driving some of those goals and activities in order to meet the needs. But where it's, it becomes very challenging for us to help individuals age in place if they have no place in which to age. So, and sometimes it's a matter of the home that they're currently living in is more than they're capable of caring for, or has challenges that can't be addressed through home modification. And, but they have, they have nowhere to move to. They may be ready to move out, but have no access or affordability to move into another home. So, that's another thing that we're looking at in 2024. So, that is, in a nutshell, the update on what we accomplished in 2023 and what we're looking at in 2024, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Could you go back to the first slide with levy income?
On.
Way back, here you go.
Oh, 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 sorry. Oh.
Now, levy income, your projections were either over optimistic, or there's a big gap between the levy income, what you actually got, and what's your budget. Could you explain that?
Yes, I mean, we generally, I'm trying to remember what the significant, if there was a significant event. If you look at the actual numbers, we're looking at the levy income of a difference of $163,000. So, I think it was just a matter of the regular levy income. I do not think it was the, oh, the renewals. No, not the renewals. The, we get the, we get two different, two different distributions of those funds. And new builds, sorry. I don't think it was, I don't, I think we're on target for the new builds, but not for the regular levy.
Will that be an issue going forward, or is that a one-year?
No, actually, this year, we were above our projection. So, our first, our first disbursement.
Maybe the projections are wrong, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Maggie, if you get any clarity on that?
I sure will, yeah. I have to, I have to look, I can't, it's been so long since I've looked at the numbers of it. We did send out our annual report, and I emailed that to each of you, but I don't know that we sent a hard copy, but you should have received an email. But yes, I will follow up on that.
More interested in how the numbers were arrived at and why the discrepancy.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Lewis, you got any questions?
Ah, yes. I wondered if it would be a good idea if our Director of Emergency Management would come speak at SourcePoint. One of the things that emergency management always recommends is just having people buy pretty inexpensive, I don't know if they're about $15 or something, weather radios, because, you know, people can't, they're not supposed to hear the sirens. I mean, it would be nice if they heard them inside the house, but that's not what our siren system is built for. But if they had a weather radio, especially if somebody's hard of hearing, then, you know, they could be warned before we've had tornadoes and other inclement weather. But Alex McCarthy is great.
Yes, yeah.
And I think then everybody could ask him questions, too.
Yes, we've worked with Alex in, we worked with him on the eclipse planning. We had representation there as well. And he will actually be joining us for our legislative update meetings as well at SourcePoint. So, yes, I will have that conversation. I know we have distributed the emergency weather radios in past years, but it has been some time, I think, since we have done that. And yeah, that would be a good program to, you know, to reinvent and bring back.
Okay. And thank you for presenting this very thorough and much, much thought, much work put into this plan, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Great plan.
And anything else?
No.
Delaware Transit, are we working well with Delaware Transit?
Oh, very well.
I know there's some issues in the past, and our board is working very closely to, I hope your board is too.
Yes, we, we actually, I just had a conversation with some of my staff members that have been in recent contact with Delaware County Transit. And they identified, this was, we were very grateful for this. They have anticipated that the funding that we provide to them, we provide funding to them through several different channels. But the funding that we provide to them to support the Bus Box Program, which is discounted transportation for older folks in the community, they don't have to be enrolled in our program. They have projected when those funds will run out and are beginning to look ahead and plan for that, and have had some conversations with us about that possibility and are looking at options so that we can make sure that that funding continues to stretch out and meet the need throughout the year versus running out before the end of the year, and then clients, you know, individuals that need transportation can't get it, or they have to pay full fee.
And I know you can, you provide funding, so is that an area you're looking at as well?
Yes, yeah.
The only other commodity I have is on affordable housing. The older citizens are generally the ones that are on fixed incomes, and affordable housing, we all recognize is an issue, but I can't help myself. This way we're directing our federal funding and our expenditures at the federal level adds to this problem. The inflation that we incur and things, that makes it worse, especially for people on fixed incomes. And that doesn't necessarily directly address the affordable housing issue, but indirectly, that's helping create the problem. And that's just an observation and comment on my part. Anything else you want to add? Appreciate it very much, we're very thorough.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Continue.
Item number 11, Resolution Number 24-342, in the matter of appointing a representative to the Ohio Children's Trust Fund, Central Ohio Child Abuse and Child Neglect Regional Prevention Council.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have you for you, the resolution to appoint Jeff Sell to take the place on this council, and we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments?
He'll do a great job. It's a specialty, too.
I agree, and call for the vote.
Vote on motion 24-342, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Resolution Number 24-343, in the matter of approving the agreement for Title IV E agencies and providers for the provision of child placement and the First and Second Amendments to this agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services and UMCH Family Services.
So move.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. UMCH is a new placement provider that we're contracting with. They've actually accepted one of our emergency placements. We had a child come into our care under dependency whose mother is medically incapacitated. This was the only provider that was willing to accept the placement.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion 24-343, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
And item number 13 has been pulled from the agenda, so that brings us to item number 14, Resolution Number 24-344, in the matter of approving the second extension to the lease agreement by and between the Delaware County Board of Developmental Disabilities and the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the Delaware County Sheriff's Office for certain real property located at 149 East Orange Road, Lewis Center, Ohio 43035.
So move.
Second discussion.
Hi, I'm Michael Roy, Finance Manager from the Sheriff's Office. This would be an extension to a current lease agreement that we have with the Delaware County Board of Developmental Disabilities for another two-year term.
Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Vote on motion 24-344, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 15, Resolution Number 24-345, in the matter of approving the end-user software license agreement and the end-user application hosting agreement between the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, and the Right Stuff Software Corporation for employee scheduling and time and attendance software.
So move.
Second discussion.
Commissioners Tracy Davies, County Administrator, just, I know that the Auditor's Office and the Sheriff's Office are both looking forward to this new software. It will certainly help with the calculation, automatic calculation of overtime versus manual calculation.
So, the Auditor's on board?
Correct.
Because I wasn't sure of that.
Yes.
I hesitated.
Yes.
Because there's some question about, there's some questions we weren't sure about. So, with that, do you have anything to add?
It would just help aid in a lot of the manual paper that we are currently processing. So, we are also as well looking forward to this.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Vote on motion 24-345, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
That brings us to administrative reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing from me today?
I have nothing either.
I know Eric will come through for us. Rachel Lewis.
All right. We have LAPC over in emergency management this afternoon, Community Corrections Board also meets, and regional planning at 6:00. And I better leave something for you.
Well, I appreciate that.
I was going to say State of the County.
Well, I've got one thing that you won't be able to mention because you were involved in it, so I can.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. State of the County then next Tuesday at the zoo, at the African Center, and it begins at 8:00 a.m.
Doors open at 8:00 a.m.?
Doors open at 8:00.
Yeah, and I think the actual presentation is not.
Nine o'clock, okay.
But come early.
That's right.
Okay.
That's it.
I have a couple of things. I'm disappointed John Melvin left, because I wanted to say thank you. We've had concerns about the ability to hear what people say in the room. To say it's dramatically improved would be an understatement. So, would you please pass on the job? I would love to sit in it in person.
I will do so.
Because I guess I have nagged him more than anyone on that topic. But you're on the back row back there, can you hear well?
I can hear just fine.
Fantastic, because that was a concern.
I can hear Chase, too.
And sometimes we get people who speak very softly, it's sometimes hard to hear them. So, please pass that on.
I will do that.
The only other thing I have, I had the privilege of attending the Land Bank meeting, a state meeting in Akron yesterday. Unfortunately, I was able to attend today because of this meeting and tomorrow. You go to these conventions, these group meetings, and sometimes you get disappointed. They did an outstanding job. What I heard yesterday was well-presented, the speakers were excellent, and frankly, I left last night with some disappointment that I couldn't be there today and tomorrow. And I believe it's going to be in Columbus next year, so my hope is that we can all schedule accordingly and. accordingly and, and all have an opportunity to attend. But kudos, well done by them, although they won't hear this message, but it deserves to be said. And I think I learned some things yesterday that will benefit me, and I know Michelle Bonney is still there, and she'll be there for me, and I'm also a board member from Orange Township. With that, I have nothing else. I understand we do not have need for executive.
No.
So without objection, we are adjourned.